Call the meeting to order. Kristy Haysman.
Here.
Susan Fast.
Here.
Katie Kieker. Andy Pearson. Valerie Ahmet.
Here.
Pam Siphonsakum.
Here.
Am I actually on the roll call, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, you are because you have officially been sworn in. So you should be officially on the roll call.
Shannon Sykes. So we do not have to do anything with amending the agenda? He's already been sworn in?
Exactly.
Perfect. That answers our question. All right, we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Thomas, would you read the Betterfield Mission Statement?
The Betterfield Oden Public School provides a safe, welcoming, and challenging learning environment for all students where differences are assets. Partner with families to instill the qualities whereby all students are engaged in and accountable for their learning.
Thank you. Approval of agenda is presented or amended?
One thing, I wanted to switch number one and two around. Because in the audience, I assume I can't see, but I assume that we have our guests there from the lighting folks. And I would rather be polite, obviously, for him to be the first thing on the agenda than we can deal with the tariff agreement after that, if you don't mind switching those two around.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? The amended agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. One other thing. Is Mr. Walker there?
Yep.
Yes.
We were going to add another position. Correct about the...
Yeah, I was just gonna pipe in. So, Mr. Altman would like to be back as the director for the One Act Play. We have fourteen high school students that have signed up for it and want to participate. And that's on things to come, but it's called Lockdown. And so, actually, I think it was October that the resignation was accepted. Now we're in November and he's back on.
Yay! So that would be under number five?
Yes.
Okay. Six will be other.
That is all, Madam Chair.
Alrighty. With the amendments, do I still have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approval of meeting minutes? For October twenty-sixth?
A motion.
Your motion? Susan's motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Kristy's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Special Board Meeting Canvas of the Election? Did you say you'd motion it?
Yeah.
Susan's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Ms. Kristy seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Payment of November bills?
Madam Chair, I went over all the bills, worked with Sandy and with Kathy. Any questions that I had? I had about half a dozen or so questions. And they are all there and appropriate for us to pay. I'm going to be happy to answer any questions then.
You know what golfer is, Mr. Thomas?
I'm sorry?
Golfer?
Golfer is, yeah. Is he answering your question?
Yeah, golfer is...
It's our soccer stuff.
Late-based sports place out of Owatonna, sorry. So a lot of our equipment for soccer was purchased through them since July. We had previously used them for PE equipment as well.
All right, do I have a motion to approve payment of November bills?
I'll make the motion to approve the payment of the November bills.
Pam's motion, do I have a second?
I'll second. Nope, sorry.
Shannon's second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Information Committee reports? Academic athletic pairing, we have not had any meeting or any communications?
I've written a little bit of today during my report, and so will Mr. Walker if there are any questions.
Okay, perfect. Building grounds, health, safety, transportation? Also have not met. Community education?
I haven't heard anything.
Continuing education? Meet and confer?
Yes, we just...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I said we just got an email on meet and confer and we're trying to, you know, get a date nailed down, so...
The sooner the better, so... Yeah.
Yeah.
We're going to try and get that nailed down tonight. Negotiations?
Just the update that we can in the next, I'd say, the second or third weekend in December, we will be meeting with the teachers. They, finally, just a little bit ago, they said that they're prepared to meet with us again now. That, just a reminder to you, the two-year contract that we'll be working with them on is actually when that began this last July, for a number of reasons. They didn't choose to meet quite that early, and that's fine. And then we'll just pay them back to that point at the beginning of the school year. So, but at this point, we will set the time with them to meet again, as I said. Probably mid-December is the best time.
Will you be sending out an email from that?
Yes, for sure. I'll keep you apprised of what's happening there. And we'll also have the members of the, obviously, of the team, which is yourself and Pam and Andy, will be working with them. I'll be working with them too, make sure that it's a convenient time for all of us.
Okay. Personnel? Riverbed Education? I did not make the last meeting, so I have not heard back. Staff Development?
I have not gotten any emails about a staff development meeting.
Okay. Technology, Andy's not here. Watmon Family Collaborative?
Nothing.
Wellness?
Nothing.
World's Best Workforce? We have that meeting coming up that we just changed over.
As I was just going to say, I would like to have a meeting of the World's Best Workforce members. Sometime, I would say, again, mid-December. I could do it before an next board meeting.
Okay. And will you be sending an email out for that also?
Yes.
Okay.
That's true, for sure.
All right. Onto Administrative Reports, Superintendent Report?
Madam Chair, a couple of things I wanted to mention in my superintendent reports. Some really good news about our enrollment. Let me just mention a couple of things. Beginning of, if you can kind of keep track of this, and I apologize, I don't think you got copies of it, so I apologize for that. The beginning of last school year, we had, I'll just mention the K through twelve members because those are the most important for us. We had two hundred and six students enrolled officially in our school. At the end of last school year, we had lost two kids and we were down to two oh four. Beginning of, kind of the beginning of last, excuse me, of this school year, in August, we had two hundred and twelve. So, just in, over the summer, essentially, we went from two hundred and four to two hundred and twelve kids. We had an increase of eight kids, just in the summer. Actually, by September, our count increased by three more, and our numbers, our K through twelve numbers, in September were two hundred and fifteen. Numbers, if you remember from my report last month, there were two hundred and sixteen. We gained one more student. And believe it or not, this month, we gained five more students for my report today. We are now at two hundred and twenty-one students who have enrolled in our school district tenure, presently our students. This is a huge increase over the last few years before Mr. Walker and I came, and I think it's something we should all be proud of. It's, that's our goal. If you remember, I said, and you may have forgotten the specifics, but I said if we can increase by five students a year, maybe a bit more than that, that would be fantastic, and we can get ourselves out of the financial pickle we were kind of in. And that's what's been happening. We've gone from about two hundred back at that time, a couple of years ago, to two hundred and twenty-one now. So, very pleased to present those numbers. If you have any questions about that, I can answer them now or when I've done my report. I just wanted to, my report's mostly about the different topics that we have on the agenda. And I'll talk about those items as we get to them. The only other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was the work that Mr. Walker and I have been doing with regard to the pairing situation. So let me, let me update you on that, if I could. Just as quickly as I can, really. What we, what we all know is that we were surprised by our neighbor to the east, that they didn't want to continue the pairing with us. And so, we had this year yet for that to continue. Talking about sports pairing, of course. And then they also chose academic pairing. Well, what we've, what we've had to do, since we tried every avenue we could and tried to see if we couldn't change their minds, didn't happen. And so that's something that we all have to accept, as much as we might not want. So what we've been doing, Mr. Walker and I have been working with the state, as well as a couple... I'm saying we can figure out another solution. Obviously, if we can't pair with anyone else, we have to have our own sports program. That's not our first choice, by any means, because a school of our size simply can't produce as much of a, as much of, and I guess as wide a breadth of choices for students as we would like to have. So, but we've been working especially with Mountain Lake, Madam Chair and myself, and Mr. Walker visited with them a few months ago, went to one of their board meetings. Been also talking back and forth with the superintendent there, Mr. Trump and Strom, and we have worked out a number of situations we're trying to get through to them that we really have a lot to add to them and to you. And so now what the situation is, just to let you know, is they have asked, and that's understandable, that they meet with their other schools that they're paired with, which is Comforty and Mountain Lake Christian. If not next week, the week after, they're going to be doing that. We're not too involved with that, of course, that's their business. But they will discuss the merits of our request, and then we will see what they have to say. We've sent letters to all three schools, just a week or so ago, so that they all know our request, they all know what we can add to the mix, and we can. And we will, we'll also, we will also address those other districts after the holiday, in two days. We'll send letters, how to get to them, letting them know where we're coming from and what we think we can provide for the group. So, I will be talking to all of you as soon as I have an answer. We're hoping that'll happen in two weeks. It might be a bit more than that by the time they finally get back to their boards and make a decision and so forth. But as soon as we have an answer, that's, that'll be provided to you absolutely for sure. And as I said, the other option that we're, that we will, we're kind of, we have to have our own team, our own teams, we will do that, because that's, if we get to that point. But that's not what we're, I don't, I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at us being able to pair with these other three schools and just mention. Do you know if Mr. Walker wanted to add anything, and otherwise, if so, please do so. And if not, we can open it up for any questions you might have.
The only thing that I would add is I reached out to Comforty School District to visit with the administrator, and I have, just today, and was not able to connect with her. I did visit with Mr. Jonathan Belgerd, the Mountain Lake Christian Administrator, reaching out and looking to visit. We actually ended up visiting for about eighty minutes today, with some different questions he had and things that he was wondering about. And he's going to ask a few more questions to some of his board, and then look to connect with us, with myself, this next week, and move in whatever direction they deem fit through the conversations and questions that he asked of me today.
Any other questions about the pairing approach that we're, or where we are at this point in time? Actually, that's about all we know. What we just gave you is pretty much as much information as we can provide at this point.
Just from, Mr. Walker, just from you visiting with the Christian School Administrator, did you, you know, did he sound like, you know, a little hopeful that maybe it would happen, or?
Yeah. And so, with him, part of the question was that would it still be open for just them, you know, for them just as a school, or were you asking as a whole package, whether it was Comforty and Mountain Lake Christian, Mountain Lake Public School? And I assured him that the letters and the conversations that we had over the summer were an invite for their students and to participate within our soccer program as a whole school. And then so then he was, he was kind of asking more of the logistical questions, like, you know, what if, or what would it look like for this piece, you know, for transportation? And I said, well, you know, that'd be all part of the agreement that our boards would come to on that pairing piece. These are some of the things that I know either we have done or other schools that have been a part of have paired. And so he was just going to take that information and visit a little bit more with his board members, clarify that, you know, our invite to them for soccer was to them as a school, and how it could benefit both schools in pairing in that situation. So, he was excited that that possibility is there on their grounds. They run the U fourteen and under group, and so they have all those kids from Mountain Lake and other surrounding smaller towns also come in. But it would be a possibility that their kids would have something to move into, you know, outside of that program and be able to compete with Minnesota State High School League through that. So, I'm hopeful that they would be excited and want to do something in regards to that. And I believe if there's some positivity through that school, as well as Comforty, that hopefully, as they continue to meet with Mountain Lake Public, as they're already paired, that might be an opportunity for us to find some different avenues to pair in some sports as well.
I spoke with Superintendent Bill Strom at Mountain Lake. He was quite positive, but he has to be careful, because even though he might be positive as to be, it's the board that makes that final decision, and we respect that. So, hopefully, they'll understand that we have a lot to offer since we started something. As Mr. Walker was just mentioning, we've got a good soccer program started, and hopefully, they would appreciate what we can offer them, and we appreciate, of course, what they can offer back to us. So, frankly, they all want to meet together and discuss the opportunity.
Well, thank you for doing that for us. Did you have a principal's report also?
Yes, I do. Good evening, everyone. As we closed out our October board meeting, we were just getting ready to go into our high school conferences on October twenty-seventh. The following week, November Saturday, November sixth, in Northfield, Minnesota, our boys and girls cross-country teams competed at the state meet. And our boys took fifteenth place, with Ryan Pearson earning twenty-eighth place. Carlos Rodriguez earned one hundred and fifty-third place as individuals. Our girls team earned sixteenth place, with Deanna Rodriguez placing one hundred nineteenth, and Marissa earning one hundred forty-ninth place, respectively. On November ninth, we had our fall music concert held by our secondary students. November, on Veterans Day, we celebrated with our local veterans, and our seniors catered to them a lunch here in the gym. Thank you to all of our students as they helped make that event particularly special. Mr. Stady for facilitating it, and Mr. Yonkey and Mrs. Page for leading us in the music performances as well that day. Last night and today, our elementary teachers met with students and families for elementary conferences. Our students will be competing, our secondary students will be competing in the One Act Plays with the Minnesota State High School League. The play is called Lockdown. There are fourteen students, seven through twelve, that expressed interest and have shown up to the first two meetings in the last three, four days here at school. Another bullet, sports pairing letter sent by our board chairperson, Valerie. And as we just talked about, our November and late October PLCs. On October twenty-seventh, we worked in PLC small groups at the elementary level to discuss work, and our high school teachers had conferences. November third, if you recall, the first Wednesday of the month, Amy Yonan is coming in, and she's working with our co-teaching partners at the secondary level. And as Ms. Jamie Amarago returns at the end of January, then her and the elementary teachers will participate in those first Wednesdays as well with co-teaching. We worked on small groups and talk read, talk write strategies within our lessons and implementation by November tenth. And as we moved into the November tenth, we worked on and did reflections on our small, on our talk read, talk write lessons. And this past week, on November seventeenth, our state advocates were here and up elementary worked and reflected on progress monitoring and data and how that differentiation process is going with our students. And secondary started taking a look at completing the protocols and differentiation for our students based off of data as well. Reminders, reminders of things to come. Thanksgiving break starts tomorrow through the week, and we'll return Monday. On November thirtieth, trimester one ends. Trimester two then starts on December first. That next Friday, December third, is a no-student-contact day, workshop day for the teachers. And on December twentieth, during the day at two o'clock, we're going to have our K through four holiday concert. And that evening at seven o'clock, our seven through twelve band and choir wild concert. Again, that's on December twentieth. The holiday break is from December twenty-third to January second this year. That's the conclusion of my report. If there are any questions, you can answer them.
Did you say two PM for the K through four holiday concert?
That is correct. It's on December twentieth.
And then seven PM for fifth through twelve?
Yeah. And you have an electronic version in your email of my report and everything. I just went through it as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, action items. The presentation, discussion, and approval and acceptance of Excel Energy Rebate and Retro Light and Design Lighting Contract with Replacement School Lights.
Madam Chair, as you can probably see, and I can't because I do, and I'm on the screen. Jake Anderson is with us this evening from retrofit companies. They have put together a, three different possible proposals for us to look at. And I asked that he come, and I appreciate his coming, to be here in person to actually go through those three proposals. And Jake, have you, have you got invited the board members with your paperwork?
Not yet, Steve. I will give you guys... I also have a, I have a...
Can I leave one here?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
I have a simple slide I would like you guys, and I have a couple visual aids to show as well to kind of give you some, help you understand the options that are available. So if you wouldn't mind, I'd like you to turn around here. We didn't know the best way to give you this, so... Can you switch the input?
I'll change it.
Okay, sorry. So, so my goals today is really, I think Steve's been, you know, we've had some conversation. I think, I believe I was the one that joined you here about a minute, month ago, and kind of answered some questions over the phone. I live in Owatonna, so our company, the retrofit companies, is a, is our corporate office founded in Owatonna, so that's where I live. And thank you for moving me up the agenda a little bit, so I could get home at a somewhat reasonable time this evening.
I don't know what happened on your screen.
Oh, maybe I'm, I might be, there we go. Oh, maybe I'm, I might be, there we go. Okay, there we go. So my goal today though is really just to, as Steve said, we've put together three different options for you. And really just to help you understand the options that we've put together and what the kinda cost benefits would be, the pros and cons and the investments and savings. And then just to give you guys whatever information you can, can get to make an informed decision. So as I work through a few slides here, so obviously we're in a older building here, but the average age of a public school in the United States is forty-four years. But the average functional age being about twenty years. So just something to think about, like the functional age being the equipment and the maintenance needed to kinda take care of the building. So I don't know if Steve's touched on it at all, but really as we looted into this, this project, we looked at, you know, what's kinda the goals of the project. So maintenance and productivity, so it's really reducing that ongoing maintenance and the recycling costs associated with maintaining the current system. Everything from changing bulbs to recycling the old mercury bulbs, as well as just increasing that productivity of the staff that's in charge of managing the building and, and doing these, these maintenance related things. Also just reducing overhead, obviously that's important. So projects like these obviously offer an energy saving factor, as well as there's utility rebates from Excel Energy that could, you know, gives you the opportunity to take advantage of those to help fund the projects. And then three, the educational setting, so it's really just implementing lighting technology that's gonna enhance the learning environment for students, teachers, and staff, and really the community long term. So multiple studies out there really talk about the quality of light and how it benefits the space. Whether that's a, you know, not to get into the lighting technical stuff, but that's the, the vertical and the horizontal light coming into a space. So then obviously what can we do then? These, the goal is obviously, what are the options? So really going with an LED technology, getting rid of the fluorescents. And then these different LED options, which I'll show you a few, you know, really offer that energy savings and that sufficient light levels maintained for anywhere from fifteen to thirty years as they, depending on the option you go with, so. So option one is replace the fluorescent bulbs with LED bulbs. So I have, LED bulbs are really, this is an LED bulb, that's a smaller version, right? You guys have four foot, but just for demonstration purposes. As you can see, there's an LED strip here that's on the bottom. So lights all shoots out the, instead of a fluorescent where it's all three sixty. It's a, but basically it's, the driver's in here, it's LED, it looks like a fluorescent. It pops in your current existing fixtures, just like a fluorescent bulb. But the quality of light and the longevity of the solution are different. And I'm gonna, I don't think I'll blind you too bad, this is, but. So as you can see, looks much like a fluorescent bulb. Compared to, to a fluorescent, this is a, about a twelve watt compared to thirty-two watts. So a significant reduction in wattage, and that's where you get your energy savings. And obviously the rated life of the LED is a fifty thousand hour solution compared to a fluorescent, which is rated for a thirty-six thousand hour solution, which generally equates to about a ten to fifteen year estimated solution life for the LED bulb project. So all of our project proposals are turnkey, so it's everything from material, labor, equipment, recycling, rebate fulfillment, everything all in one. So total investment price for this option, entire school, fifty-nine thousand nine hundred with an estimated rebate from Excel Energy at seventeen thousand one hundred sixteen eighty-two. And that should be in your left column there. The estimated annual energy savings is thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Again, a ten to fifteen year estimated solution and a five-year material warranty. Just to touch on the estimated solution, I talked about the rated life. What we do to quantify the energy savings is we did a full audit of your facility. We looked at every fixture and every room and we took, we took note of, recorded what the current technology is as well as what the proposed LED solution would be. We took the hours provided by Steve as far as what are the annual hours that those lights are on in this space. And then, you know, use that as the savings analysis. So if anything, it's a conservative analysis. But pros of this option here, it's the lowest initial investment cost of the three options we're gonna present today. There's significant energy savings, as you can see, and a rebate, and you're gonna improve the lighting. The LED lighting is a lot better light, it's a higher color rendering index than fluorescent. And the cons of it though is that compared to the other ones I will touch on here, is a shorter life expectancy, the shorter material warranty, and a higher cost of ownership over that thirty-year viewpoint. So option two then would be to replace, replace the all of fluorescent with an LED fixture. So what we have specified is what we call a flat panel fixture, which is what we have here. I'm gonna plug in, this one's not as bright as it might seem. So as you can see, it's a totally new look than what you're seeing now. Right now you have these types of bulbs with a prismatic lens over it. This type of fixture, the lights actually on the outside shooting in, really offering a new look along with the energy savings. So again, the, this investment price, one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred, the twenty-five thousand dollar rebate from Excel, thirteen thousand dollar annual energy savings estimate, twenty-five to thirty-year estimated solution life with a ten-year material warranty. I'm gonna plug that so it's not a distraction. But again, the new look, it's adding a visual comfort, it's a lot softer lighting, there's no glare. It's flicker free, so fluorescent bulbs and LED bulbs have a little flicker to them. So what we're finding in schools is that kids that in the autism spectrum or that have sensory sensitivity, they are affected by that flicker of fluorescent lights or even LED bulbs. Going with an LED fixture, it does eliminate that flicker. And a utility rebate, you're gonna have a longer material warranty, and again, longer lifespan. So as again, this LED lamp's rated for fifty thousand hours, this fixture is rated for a hundred and fifty thousand hours. So going through from a lamp to a fixture, you can bet that you're gonna probably invest in the lamp solution three times in the same lifespan as you would in one fixture option. Obviously, that's a big price difference between the options, so. But that lower cost of ownership over that thirty-year view. So again, higher initial spend, offering very similar savings and rebates. So again, the total wattage of a four lamp fixture, if they're twelve watts a lamp, plus the ballast or the fact, the ballast factor compared to an LED fixture, the energy savings is pretty equivalent. And the rebate's a little bit more than the lamp version, bulb version. But again, it's the longevity of the solution is the big differentiator there. And then option three, fluorescent, replace the fluorescent with LED fixtures that offer dimming and occupancy. So dimming and occupancy adds a little bit more to the investment price, offering similar energy rebates from Excel. And the estimated energy savings is similar in our evaluation, but one thing I wanna highlight on that is that it's hard for us to quantify how much savings the controls will have. And this fixture here, I'm gonna show you kinda the functionality of some of the controls that we specified. So what you can do, each classroom would have basically this monitor in their room on their switch. It comes with four different scenes, so they can basically turn it all the way on or off. They can dim it down to whatever setting they want. They can dim it back up just by pushing the button. Then they can have four different scenes. So for example, scene one is that's currently set at a hundred percent, pulling a hundred percent of the demand to, to power the fixture. You can set scene two at eighty percent. You can see it dimmed down a little bit. You can set scene three at sixty percent, scene four at forty percent. Those are all preset at the time of installation. Another thing you can do is you can have one of the scenes or multiple scenes, turn on different lights, turn off different lights. So in areas when you have a projector here, you could hit scene two, this row of lights shuts off automatically just by the hit of a button rather than having multiple switches in the room. Also, you can do, during activities, you can have those setups. We've seen these in schools where during test time, they'll have it ramped up at the brightest it can be. But during times when the class, during class that they want more, more of a calm feature, they can have that set more on a preset and just by hitting a button. And then they can still adjust accordingly from that preset, just on demand. So the, the fact that when this runs at say forty percent, it's only pulling forty percent of the energy that it would pull up compared to the hundred percent. So that's gonna be significant, is gonna be more savings, but it's also gonna be adding to the life of the fixture. But it's really hard to quantify on a, on a proposal like this to say you're gonna get more. So we'd rather just err on the side of conservative and just really just, just explain that to you and how that could benefit the savings piece of it and the longevity piece. And then of course, there is the classroom piece, which is important. I know that Steve and I visited about that, is really the ability for a teacher to adjust the lighting in their room really gives them the control of the room. We've seen different, we've seen test scores go up with higher color temperature lights and higher brighter lights. We've seen less issues in classrooms with dimmer lights. We even have, there's even technology out there that can change colors. There's different things that we can do, we didn't specify in this case, but we've seen some different effects on the classroom just on the lighting of the room. And talking with our principal in Owatonna at the high school, the, you know, in his words, the, the year, the time of like having rows of learning is kinda passed. You know, it's, it's, the classrooms are adapting a lot. And the, and setting the, having the ability to set tones in a room or set scenes in this example can be valuable. So again, highest investment cost, longest longevity, and obviously longest or higher savings potential. And again, a ten-year warranty on all material. So I could send these to you, this is a video from Caledonia. On the back of this page, there's four different references I put on there. Different school districts in the, you know, Mankato, I think is probably the closest one, Wasika, Caledonia. We did, we did projects there. Faribault Schools is another one. So like those are all for as far as like, hey, did you get the savings? Did you, how is it, how was everything working? What's the, you know, have you used the, what kinda controls did you do? Faribault, we did the color tuning controls. Caledonia, we did a relamp. So that was like the, that's the first option I presented. So and then again, the Faribault Schools, again, it's the, and we did a, this is a video about the teacher's input. I mean, I could play it, it's, it's like six, eight minutes, so I could send this to you or send it to Steve and he can get this to you guys to watch at another time, both of these. But, but those four on the back there definitely, you know, is a reference of people to call and see, you know, what kinda savings are you seeing a year, two years later? What kinda maintenance has it been? What kinda, what kinda effect has it had on your environment? And those are, you know, that's really the, a better reference than, you know, me standing up here, so. But at the end of the day, so that's really all it is. I mean, at the end of the day, you got three good options and they're all good options. It's really, the biggest differentiators are gonna be, you're all, they're all three gonna get you about the same amount of energy savings initially, they're gonna get you a, a good rebate. And then the, but the biggest variation would be that longevity. So I've had districts look at it from a way like, well, we can do the lamp version, but then if I know and with inflation in thirty years, I'm gonna have to do this three times. What is that price point look for the district in a thirty-year window? But other districts say, we need to worry about the five to ten-year window and that ten-year window would be a good lamp solution, so, at a much less expensive price point. So any questions on the technology or what we're proposing?
How was, question, on that first option, you know, when you just put in the LED, would there be a way to have sensors hooked up to it so that, you know, like if nobody's in the room, it was just shut off by itself?
Great question. That's one thing, limitation on the lamp version is that it doesn't really allow to have the sensors to it just with the way that, so it's, it's definitely a way to get the savings and get the efficiency, the efficiency and the rebates, but it's, it doesn't have some of those control features.
Okay.
Which, that's, that obviously bumps the price as you go into that, so. But great question, it's a common one, for sure. So that's, yeah, with that, I guess that's, Steve, if you have anything to add, I guess that's the only, that's.
I don't know if we can hear him right now. So he might have been talking this whole time, we can hear him. Are you done with the presentation?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll switch it back.
I can unplug and.
I'll switch it back and then we'll hear him. If he has anything to add, hopefully it pops up.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, what I was gonna add is that, a- as I see it, there are, there are two options. Not, not so much the, the second, the one in the middle, because that one costs a whole lot more, but it doesn't provide us, other than longevity, it doesn't provide us all the benefits that would be great for teachers in the classroom. Now keep in mind, I was in the classroom as a teacher for twenty-five years and so I understand the benefit of being able to have dimming for, you know, as I mentioned before, I think it was last month I was mentioning to you in, in humor. If you look at, at me on the screen there, cause I can, that's what I see now, it's, it's hard to see me because there's no dimming up there. If that, if that was dimmed and the rest of the room was lit up more, because that's where people are and they wanna, everybody take notes or whatever in a classroom, that's the benefit of being able to, to see the, the, whatever's on the screen or it was, whatever's on the, the whiteboard, blackboard, or movie, whatever you would have. So that's a benefit for sure. The other benefit of going with that option three, and I'll get back to option one in a second. The other benefit is that it, it also has the censoring. So in other words, as, as I think you all, you all know, I, I stay late typically at the school and all the lights would be turned off, could be after whatever number of minutes, they would just automatically shut off in the hallway and in the office, outside of my office. But then when I decided, you know, six thirty, seven or eight, whatever time to, to take off and leave, and I have to walk out into the hallway, pop, it goes on because of a sensor. So in the meantime, we're saving all that money while we don't need to have anyone seeing where they're going in the hallway because there's no one going anywhere in the hallway. When I get there, it goes on for the minute or so that I needed. And then when I, when I leave, it goes off. Those are the benefits that you'll see. And then, and I really appreciate that, that Jake didn't try to make a guess at what that, that cost savings would be. But obviously there'd be a substantial cost savings. I don't know if it'd be ten or fifteen percent or twenty, whatever that would be. It's hard to, it's hard to estimate and as I said, I respect the fact that he didn't, didn't wanna try to do that. So that's, that's the benefit of that. In addition to what he mentioned a minute ago, which is that it has a, for the most part, a life expectancy of a hundred and fifty thousand hours, essentially about thirty years or more, as opposed to the first choice, which is, is just ten to fifteen years. So the, so we're looking at, as I see it, folks, we're looking at a choice this way of a, of an inexpensive option, for sure. We're talking about after the rebate, the first option would cost us about, about forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars and we could pay it off right away, or we could pay it off over a period of a couple of years and the savings would, would probably be, be received and appreciated right away because it didn't cost us as much in the, in the initial. But as, going over to option three, as Jake was also mentioning, well, hold it now, cause every ten to fifteen years, you're gonna have to replace bulbs. So then you have that other option where it's more likely to be thirty or forty years than before you have to start changing bulbs. So like, that cost though, after the rebate, if you, if you look at that, you're talking about approximately a hundred and ninety-five thousand with our initial investment after the, after the rebate. So a lot more a cost, but a lot more benefit and a lot longer, longer life for, for the, the lighting. And it's just a matter of, of what we wanna do. Correct, correct the problem for the next ten years and see the savings right away. But then after that, we're gonna have to start replacing bulbs again, the LED bulbs. Or do you wanna have the long-lasting option of number three? As I see it, those are the, the two options that we really have. If you have any answer questions, and so would, so would Jake, but that's where I'm coming from. So any thoughts or questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can I say something?
What's that?
Can I say something?
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Well, the, it says annual cost savings for energy, so that would be thirteen thousand a year. And if you're thinking ten years, you're already gonna be saving a hundred thousand dollars. It kinda seems like it's gonna pay for itself in the end. That's just my thought that I observe.
And I have, I guess, I look at it different because I saw Caledonia, they save what, ten thousand dollars annually? Their school's four times as large as ours. You divide that out, it's only a twenty-five hundred dollar per year savings, in my mind.
One thing Caledonia did though is they had a twenty-five watt fluorescent lamp in there instead of the thirty-two watt. So that, but you're, yeah.
Yep.
But your theories don't.
Right, yeah. So, so in theory, it's gonna take seventeen years for us to recoup the cost of our spending.
And one thing to think about too with the, with the lamp version, so and a pro, one of the positive things is that we are eliminating a ballast. So this is what they call a type B. So you get rid of the ballast, so you get rid of that maintenance when you do the bulb version. Another thing to think about though is that there's only a rebate for LED once. So if you do, so in ten years, Excel's not gonna have any money based on how they've run programs through the last, you know, decade. Not to say that they won't have something, cause that's Excel. I mean, they're pretty aggressive with their energy and sustainability initiatives. But historically, they haven't had any rebate later. And then, obviously with current economic trends, hopefully they calm down. But you never know what supply chain and inflation and what that will be. The average over the last hundred years is three point one percent inflation rate annually. I think it's five something now, so that won't stay at five. But just something to think about, that same project will cost more in ten years, next time we do it. So, that's part of the picture. One thing I wanted to say on Steve's note on the sensor, so this is like, a sensor like this would be that occupancy, as he said. So, and that can be set to dim down. So if no one's in the hallway for ten minutes, it goes down fifty percent. If no one's down there for another ten minutes, it goes down to fifteen percent. And if no one's out there for another five minutes, it goes down off. So it can do step dimming, it's kind of, it's not, not just an on or off feature. It can go lower if no one's in there. So that was a safety thing. So if it's, somebody is in the room, it will brighten up once they get out there, but they can at least see the hallway's not dark, completely dark, you know, at, at given times, so.
Any other questions?
That's all I got. I gave my two sounds.
Well, thank you for coming. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Answered a lot of our questions.
Yeah, obviously, if you have something come up, Steve will be happy to get the answers from me and I will be happy to answer them. If you don't mind, I'm going to carry this stuff out of the way here.
Absolutely.
No, no, I can, I don't need to interrupt anymore. You guys can, I'll just, I'll be as quiet as I can.
Madam Chair, what, what we wanted to do though was to make a decision this evening, and that's why you've got me, but especially you have Jake here to answer the questions. Because the, it's the end of, essentially the end of November, this rebate goes away at the end of December, another month. As you know, we've been talking about this and discussing it for several months. That the rebates don't, don't go on forever. And I, I could, actually I've pushed them back this far. So if there's any way we can do it, it would be great to make a decision this evening.
Okay.
Can we, Mr. Thomas, we have a couple of teachers in here. Can we ask them a question if they think it would be beneficiary to?
Absolutely.
Have dimming or, I mean, any of that? I mean, would it make a difference in your teaching or your classroom?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, why not just turn off one of the sets of lights?
Cause there are three switches or two switches in your room, correct?
I mean, I'm sorry, and that's just my.
No, yep, and that's exactly what.
We've got three sets, each one's run by a switch. If you wanna dim it, turn off one, two or three.
And that's all the elementary classrooms, correct?
Yeah.
It's not that way in my resource room, cause it's, it's just a tiny room. So it's got one big long, like those lights up in the hallway. There's like four of them in there and it's just one light switch. And there's times when I, it would be so, so nice to shut off two of them because it's, I've got way more light going on in there than I, I truly need for that, for the size of a room.
Sure.
And secondary classrooms, that's just a single light switch, isn't it?
Mine actually is two. I think most of them might be one or two. I can't remember on all of them, but not as much control.
Visually walk in and.
I don't think there is as much.
Not as much control, I'd say.
You know, as the three banks, but.
It's older, right?
Yeah.
Would be older.
Yeah, much older.
I, I worked in a building that had the banks and I've worked in brand new buildings that would have had this stuff in Mankato. When opening up Prairie Winds and things like that. There is, it was advantageous. I'm big on the feeling of the room and, and I'm kinda setting that, that environment. But like, if I was in the three-bank room, like, you know, my first classroom, so nineteen oh six, nineteen oh four building, I would turn off a set or turn them on. And I worked a lot of times with the kids. Some of the lights are, a lot of the lights off because it could just kinda bring that calming effect. So it's advantageous to be able to, to do it. I am unsure on what it would look like, you know, for us and what we want.
I asked, how much of the cost is actually the sensors? Maybe that's not really a big concern. Maybe it's replacing the fixtures, that's the big cost and.
Right, so the option two to three is ultimately the only difference is they're adding these sensors and the controls.
Yeah, so it's like twenty-eight thousand dollars for sensors, but we can't do sensors on just replacing the light bulbs, or the lights, fluorescents.
That's why I suggested that the choices really are between one and three, because if you're gonna go as much, spending as much as option two, you might as well just go all the way with all the, with all the sensors and the dimming and so forth abilities. And so that's, that's why I wouldn't even look at that, and we aren't, as an option. I would say one or three.
I got a question. Um, if there was a power surge that would go through the building or a power outage, is it easy to reset those controls to dim the lights and whatnot?
Yeah, it, yeah, there's a.
I mean, it wouldn't mess up the circuitry or anything in there?
Yeah, so this, I mean, ultimately, it's an air system, so it's, it's not like hardwired in.
It's just wireless?
Yeah, it's a wireless, so this is the same thing you mount on the wall, no, you know, anyway, there's a, on the back of the fixture would have the control. So, yeah, it's really.
So that wouldn't be like if somebody, I know it's probably a far-fetched idea, but if somebody were to try to hack into it, just to play around with the lights? Would that be?
It's not that kind of wireless.
Well, maybe not.
It's, it's not hooked up to a network of any sorts.
Okay, well, I, you know, I know some lights that you can control with your phone and stuff.
So it'll only, yeah, so this would talk to the fixtures.
Okay.
It'll talk to all the fixtures, you know, in a, whatever vicinity you assign to this.
Okay.
So like in this room, you could, again, four scenes, that could be four rows. It could be one fixture here, one there, one, you know, and you could adjust it however you wanted to. But you could, it'd be set up for that space.
Okay.
And that, yeah.
I mean, I, I know you said wireless. I just, it popped into my head for a second there, cause like I said, some things you can control in your house with your phone and who knows?
One thing to think about too, and I, when I walked in, I only saw like one hallway and the fixtures looked like they're in good shape, at least the hallway that I saw. But obviously the look is what you're, in this particular case, you're getting a different look, which does provide, you know, I think in other communities, it's been kinda like a, cause you know, the school is used for other events too. So people come in, they use the gyms or they, you know, so parents come in and say, oh, like, really, it's different in here. It's gonna be brighter, obviously, cause that's naturally gonna happen. But it, you know, it's a, it's a way that the community can get a positive, I guess I've seen in the past, you know, so take that for what it's worth, right? But you guys are all probably, you're all members of the community, obviously, so, you know, it's just kinda something that has been commented before about people coming in and saying like, wow, it's much brighter in here. Wow, that looks a lot different. Wow, that's, looks nice. You know, and different, different appeal to, to that ambiance, I guess, that, that scene.
I know like some people can get headaches from these lights. Is it's not the same with those, is it?
Correct. That's that flicker I mentioned. So, and that's one thing that you don't, that you, with the bulb version, they, they flicker much less than fluorescent. But there is still a flicker to the bulb.
Yeah.
Most people won't notice a thing and most people that had issue with fluorescent won't notice a thing. But they're still, it's still there and it, it still can't have an effect.
Because there's a, an inevitable hum.
And the hum is gone.
Close enough to it.
Yeah. So that's a, that's one piece too, is that as you get rid of the ballast in these LED bulbs, you get rid of the hum, but you kinda keep some flicker. Could be a non-issue, could be an issue. And there could be, one thing we find too is that with other schools, especially in like Faribault where we did the color tuning in the special needs rooms. So there, the big part was like, you know, talking with those teachers and I'll be sure to make Steve, share that link with you if you watched it in your own time. But the teacher's input is, I thought was cool because they talk about how, you know, just it has the effect it can have on students, even if it's like, even if it's not, I don't know, even if it's like a feel-good button, right? So but the, if I was a student thinks it's okay. And it's even addressing some of the things with students that maybe don't, aren't known to have issues. That can affect, you know, different, you know, reading comprehension, like skipping lines and other different tones with that is, or different terms for that as far as, you know, what they can comprehend and what they, what they read, which obviously light plays a role in that. Just stuff to think about and there's a million case studies out there that you could Google, so it's not just, you know, but.
Does anyone have an opinion that you wanna share?
Can we table it till the next meeting? The rebate ends the end of the year, right? Like.
November.
Yeah, we have to decide now.
End of December.
Oh, he says we have to decide now, you know. We've tabled it for how many months?
Yeah, ones and ones.
But I thought you just said the rebate ended the end of December.
When does the rebate end, Mr. Thomas?
End of the year.
See, and our meeting's December thirteenth, so at least we could still discuss it and figure out what option instead of.
And call and.
Yeah.
Watch the videos and our.
So Excel Energy has a, December thirty-first is the signed participation agreement for the rebate.
Okay.
Work needs to be completed by March thirty-first. So, yeah, we have time to complete it. It's just getting that, letting Excel know to save you the money.
Yep.
And there's currently a twenty-five percent bonus rebate, just cause they're adding incentives from, from the pandemic and some of the, some of their initiatives have slowed some with some of the other issues out there, so.
I think we could table it.
It doesn't make any difference, do you?
I'd like to see the videos and look at the options.
I guess my question, Madam Chair, would be, no problem putting it off. We've done it for a few months. What would be the reason for doing that for the next two or three weeks though?
I feel like we've gotten some information. I think that's what I'm hearing anyway, is that we've gotten some information tonight that we'd like to
Okay.
um, not make that gut reaction decision, but actually contact, watch the videos, contact some of these people on the list, find out if they, you know, hear their own testimonial.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And it's what, two and a half weeks out until, three weeks out until our next meeting?
Not even.
So we would have it switched over by the thirteenth to make that decision? Also, we're missing two board members tonight. Their opinions are probably important.
I was ready to go tonight, but.
Do you have an opinion? Do you mind waiting till the thirteenth or would you prefer to?
It's fine.
If we do it, if we waited till the thirteenth, would they still be able to complete the work by the thirty-first of March?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will send Steve those two links to the videos mentioned in the presentation. And yeah, please encourage you all to contact those school districts and just hear what their experience was. Cause they're gonna be able to tell you what savings they've seen, what any maintenance issues they may or may not have seen and, you know, some of the positive, some different feedback they've gotten from students, teachers, staff, community.
Yep.
Well, that's really the, the whole picture, right? So, you're all, you're gonna save energy no matter what you do.
Yep.
That's a good thing. But then now it's, you know, what else is important or.
We got a lot, a lot of information tonight that'll help decide instead of.
Well, I'm glad I could be beneficial.
You did.
For the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That's the most confident I've felt, so.
Madam Chair, why don't we put the, the item on the table and put them in the next boardroom?
All right.
I have the motion to do that, to table it to the, the next boardroom.
I'll make the motion to table the retrofitting light in design to replace the school lighting.
Okay, Pam did a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Susan seconded. Motion and second. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Carried. All right, we'll put that on the next meeting on the thirteenth.
Madam Chair, the next item is the Togher Incorporated food contract. As you know, it's probably about the company we worked with before, assumption went out of business because of COVID. And so we looked around, got, got some suggestions from a couple of different companies. And the company we went with was Togher Incorporated. They've done a good job this year for us for a number of reasons. I have deep communication with them. They have a person at the Grove who, who's here occasionally and is easily and readily available by phone or, or text or, or email if I have any questions or concerns. And they've done a, they've done a good job. So my suggestion is that we would continue that contract, or I should say, agree to a second year of a contract with them. And by the way, because of the different things that we've done and they've done this year, we were able to save over seven thousand dollars where the, the cost was less than the money coming in, I'll put it that way, from the state and the federal government. So that we were, we ended up with a, an increase in our, in that fund reserve of seventy-six hundred dollars. So that's, this, this has all worked well for us and, and I, I can't think of any reason why I would suggest other than to go ahead and, and make this another contract for the next year.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve this?
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve the renewal of our food service management agreement with Togher Inc. for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kristi motion, Pam seconded. Any discussion?
So for a renew, for a renewal, we don't have to go out for a second bid at all?
That's correct. Correct, Shannon, we don't have to do that. We did, we went through a whole lot of that, several different mailings and so forth last year, because that is required the first time around. But then once you've, you're with a company, you do not have to do that.
And this contract essentially started already since it started July twenty-first and.
Correct.
That's all I got.
Anybody else? I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Preapproval of hiring assistant to principal.
Madam Chair, and members, this is an important situation. What's wonderful for us, and we've talked about this before, I've mentioned one of the reasons that we are having success with our finances besides the things that we've done, which have also helped, is that we've gotten all these ESER and, and other funds from the federal government and the state government. This, that's been very, very helpful to us. From those dollars, we would be able to pay for this particular position. Position we're talking about is someone who would essentially help us with, with academic assistance with, for the, for all the teachers as well as assisting with any kind of disciplinary things, behavioral issues, but especially the academics. Because as, as you've heard and as you may know personally or otherwise, the, the COVID situation caused the students to to lose, essentially to lose their academic momentum. No question of that. So, in the, in the wording of the grant, it even says that we can, we should do something like exactly this because of the so-called, in quotes, lost learning that occurred due to the COVID situation and the distance learning and all of those difficulties that we, we all went through throughout the whole country, not just, of course, here. So this, that's what this push, this person would do in this particular position. They would be reporting to the principal and then also to me. But they would be helping. But they would be helping students in, in all those different capacities that I just mentioned. I'd be happy to answer any other questions about that position. We, I wanted to get pre-approval from you before we went out and, and put ads in the paper and, and ad posts and so forth. And then we will, we will hopefully, I don't think, I don't know if we'll have anyone by the next board meeting. But as soon as we can, I'd like to bring a name for you to, to then have a Google for.
Oh, I have a question. What's the difference between having like the dean of students and the assistant to the principal?
That's a good question because often that position of is all dean, well, the position, position similar to that is called dean of, of students. But that's really mostly about prince, about dealing with behavioral issues. And that's not all this person, this person will be doing that a bit. But what we're really concerned about is all the academic loss that has occurred. As you know, right now, we have during the day, every day of the week, we have a half an hour of what we call academic support where the kids can go for and do go for thirty minutes, where they can get the assistance of that particular teacher or any other teacher that they're having a little difficulty with, whether it's understanding a particular concept, getting a little help with homework, whatever it would be, that's during the day. And then in the afternoons, in the evening, I should say, often, time schools over until five, five-thirty. We also have the after-school academic support. And that's, that's also what, what the state and what the federal government helps us pay for with regard to the COVID-related dollars that have come in and are going to, by the way, to continue to come in for the next at least two years. This year and two more years. So that'll be fantastic for us to help the kids get back on their feet with regard to the academics. But that's the, that's the difference. It's not, it's not as narrow as one would usually think of as the dean of students being, dealing with behavioral issues because this position would also be dealing with academic concerns.
Doesn't the dean of students deal with academics as well? I know our past dean of students helped with like the academics with the students.
I, I guess it could be thought of that way and it could be, generally speaking, then my, my background has been usually somewhat of mostly just discipline. But that, that's, that's essentially what it will be is whether we call that person assistant to the principal or dean of, dean of students, the goals are the same as I just, as I just mentioned to you.
Would the grant cover if, like the dean of students?
Absolutely. The grant is going to cover exactly what we're talking about. This person's, although this person's expenses will be covered by the grant.
How long is the grant last?
Three, this year and two more years.
And it completely covers the expense of that position?
Absolutely.
What if we, like, wanted to hire a dean of students in place of assistant to the principal?
We're, we're talking about just the title. I don't think we're really talking about having that person do anything different. We could call it whatever we wanted to call it, but I think if we, if we say assistant to the principal for academic and student affairs or something like that, then that's, I think it's a broader outline of what the person's job would entail.
So is this grant specifically for someone in that position or can it be for an educator of some sort?
Actually, the ESER money allows us to hire for a number of different purposes, Shannon. Another thing that we can do, for example, is if we had large class sizes, which we would love to have, we could also hire people to come in and to lower those class sizes. So for example, let's just say, for example, we always had a one, one elementary class that was too big for, for one teacher. It was a burden for us. Well, we could have, we could hire a person to follow that person. So there are half a dozen different or more, different purposes that makes us be able to hire for these additional staff to, to meet our needs. This is, to me, and Mr. Walker, you can address it, but we've talked an awful lot, that this is our greatest need. Two things, behavior issues and academic support.
So if I would frame it a little bit differently, to me, if you were, whether we call it dean or assistant to, I would say that that person would have some different things that they would work on would be like truancy and, truancy and attendance pieces. They would work on like the tier one, tier two interventions that are coming off of the student support team, attending those student support team pieces, essentially and working through behavioral things that take place. So that would be more of like a fire comes up and they would take, take that on. Or they would have these, these other pieces, more than I would have the opportunity to work with teachers, the academic piece, instructional, the instructional piece of the job. Then obviously we could play off of each other with those pieces as well. But it'd be more of the, like the strategic or the logistics piece of moving forward academically.
So would the assistant to the principal, does he have to deal with, say, an issue comes up where there's a problem child or a student that just doesn't integrate? So what does he do for that child? If they can't control him or her in their classroom, what do they do for them? That's, you know, I was just wondering about that. Do they spend a special time with them to help them get situated? Or do they refer them to special needs or whatever the case may be?
Yeah, so if something occurred like that, they would be the person that can go down and assist, right? If they weren't receiving support through an IEP or something like that. If that was a continued event and started a pattern, then that student most likely would come up to like the student support team, move into tier two intervention pieces. Six weeks, eight weeks after that through following those interventions. If it wasn't successful, then there's an opportunity to move through to tier three where they could possibly receive support through an IEP. That'd be a fast track of, of answering your question on that.
And Sue, another answer to your question is that they would be, this person would be working collaboratively with Mr. Walker on any of these kinds of issues that we're talking about.
And this, when we make this motion, this is just for you to start that search and hire process, right?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the search and hire of an assistant to the principal.
All right, motion by Christie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Susan seconded. Any other discussion?
I'd like to see more options, I guess. I mean, as far as if we needed, and I know the position is needed and you've explained that, but I'd like to see more options because I know there's other needs throughout the school as well, so.
Shannon, it's not like we're limited to a certain amount of money. We, we actually have quite a bit of money that's coming from these areas. And so this, this is one position only. I can probably at our next meeting or for sure in January, I'll have something else to, to suggest to the, the board with regard to what you're talking about. This is, this is our first start at, at this situation.
I think, I think it's really encouraging and exciting that we have this ESER grant that, that can, and, and these grants are there, they, but they have to be used for the purposes intended. Is that correct? Mr. Thomas?
I don't think you heard you.
Did I freeze?
Mr. Thomas?
I think I lost him.
I lost him. Yeah, if the amount of money that we worked through to Esther, their emergency relief, you're allotted X amount based off of enrollment, et cetera, is use it or lose it.
Use it or lose it, yeah. But if we have that grant dollar amount, can we like look at different options to?
I think that's what Mr. Thomas was saying. He would have more options.
Right, but I mean, the grant only lasts for so long. We're kind of looking at the bigger picture here. I mean, is the assistant principal going to be what we're going to need the next like five years down the road? Or can we look at like having a dean of students that is like aiming towards helping these kids get to where they need to be when they leave this place? I mean, yeah, we have behavioral issues. We have truancy issues. We have kids that are suffering because of COVID, but we also need somebody to look at the kids and be like, oh, this is the reason why you're, you have the truancy rates that you're at, or this is why you're failing this class. Someone that's going to actually like sit aside and help that individual student out instead of being like, okay, you're failing class because you're obviously not paying attention in school. You know, I mean, I, I, I do like the assistant to the principal part, but I'm kind of aiming at towards like, somebody needs to sit and like look at all the kids', the students', information and all their grades, what they're missing. And kind of focusing on, hey, how can I help the student better? I mean, our school is good at that, but with COVID and.
Are you talking like somebody doing one-on-one?
Someone that's going to focus on not just the behavior, not just, just everything in general, trying to help these individual students. Because not everybody.
Can that person under this title?
I ask a question. Are you thinking more in terms of, right now we've got a part-time school counselor? I mean, they, they counsel kids, they look at, they work with them on what they're going to do after they get out of high school?
Not, no, I'm looking more towards like, we need more than just, if you look at each student individually and not as a group, there's some students that need more help with a lot of like their schooling. You know, like you can't be like, I don't know, it's kind of hard to explain. Because you do have your set classroom and you see some of the kids that are behind and some that aren't. And there are kids that are late for school because maybe something is going on with them individually. And I understand that he says like the dean of students is more towards the behavior part, but I feel like we need someone that's gonna.
I think he took that back afterwards.
Focus on, I mean.
I think it's about the same person. They just wanted a fancier title. I mean, it's, I think it's the same person.
I think it, the title is a little, he was explaining it was just a little broader so that person can evolve to where you want it to go.
Because you give them a dean of students and they think that they're for discipline. Discipline, so he's looking for something with more than discipline.
A little broader.
Yep, exactly. That's, that's exactly right, Shannon. You hit on the head there. We didn't want to have people thinking this is only a disciplinary person because they're not going to be just that. They're going to be helping kids with their academics.
Right, but this is kind of broad itself, like kind of want to pinpoint like what services we really need for.
But then you have a title this long.
Right.
But a principal, a principal does a lot of the things that they talked about and what you've talked about. So an assistant to the principal is going to do essentially the same things, just a smaller scale.
Right, but then I don't want somebody coming in going like, oh, I'm the assistant principal and.
I, I have a lot of confidence in our academic team, our teachers, our principal, our, you know, our administration, the communication that, that they have to have in order for their students to be successful. So if, if Mrs. Bolti sees something that maybe another team member could address or be aware of, then, you know, they're going to talk, they're going to communicate and.
Right, but you can talk and you communicate, but is that actually really going to happen?
Well, and that's hopefully what the assistant to the principal.
Right, but you have to have, you have to be able to like communicate. You can assume that people are communicating and something's being done. But is something being done or is it being brushed underneath the carpet?
That's exactly why we need this, this person, Pam, to, to, to make sure that all these things are happening as they should be happening.
Right.
Yeah, and I don't think by changing the title of dean assistant, I don't think that's going to make a difference.
I know that's not going to make a difference, but I think we need to be able to communicate as a school first and kind of figure out what we need for the students. We can't just like throw in positions that we need and look at the wrong, because when we don't have that grant anymore, how are we going to pay this position? Like we.
I think it's a position that when you accept a position that has, you're funded by a grant, when the grant goes away, you understand that you go away unless you pick up another grant. I've worked many years in that field.
Yeah, I just feel more comfortable if we can communicate as a school and figure out what we, what we need first.
I think if, I don't know what, what involvement you've had, but I feel like that's part of the administration and the teachers to, I hire you to trust you to do that.
Level of our staff. And this is just one more person that, you know, that our staff can go to and say, I just want you to be aware of, of this and, you know, what are your thoughts? What, what can we do to help this student? And, you know, they work together as a team to help this, this student through whatever issues they're having. That, that's my, that's what I'm thinking when I hear assistant to the principal. And I love it that it's funded by a grant.
Now, keep in mind that we have, we're in an academic situation, as you know, that we're considered a priority school for five years and this is getting to the end of that. There hasn't been a whole lot of improvement in the academics and it surely did get helped by COVID coming along. So we have an improvement plan that's state mandated. And this is one of the reasons that we need to have this position to help oversee the tracking of the students' academics. Part, part of the difficulty that some of the, some of the kids are having is because of, of behavior issues. And this person will also work with those. But essentially that's going to be an academic improvement plan for each of the kids that they would work with. And frankly, if we could hire more than one, that's what I would be coming to you and suggesting. If it works out well the next few months, that's probably what I will do. And, and for one, another thing, as I said, the grant will go on for three years. And at that point, if we can, if we can get everything working as it should be, we may not need this person again, as we will see. And we'll also, with things going as, as they are, we'll also have two hundred and fifty kids as opposed to two hundred and twenty. And we won't, we'll be able to hire a person to do that as well at that point. And I'm not, not really totally kidding about that.
I think I have a question. It might sound a little weird, but with this new assistant, will he be able to talk to the children's parents too to make sure that they know what's going on?
Absolutely.
Because I know like I've heard some stories that some kids, they just refuse to do their work. And then the parents need to know what their kids are doing and so they can all get on the same page and work together to help that person.
Absolutely, Susan. That would be a big part of this, this situation is when we have a youngster who's not motivated in the right way. We would want that, that individual to be working with the parent as well as the child.
Because I, I would feel better knowing that if we hire this person, they're willing to get dirty to get it all done, to help out these kids. Because I'd like to see a hundred percent of all these kids pass and do good in life. You know, kids shouldn't fall through the cracks.
That's exactly what, yeah, that is.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Yep, motion and a second, so. Do you want to roll call it or you think we're going to behave? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Okay, reorganizational meeting date? Get out your calendars.
Don't forget we still have other position.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. We did forget. I did forget that one.
Well, we had that one act that has number five.
Yeah.
And number four is our-
Let's do the reorganizational first. Reorganization usually has to be done before the school board meeting?
It's typically done the first week of January, when whatever's convenient for the board members.
Whenever we have our first snowstorm.
There you go.
So I'm not here January fourth because that's when we fly back in from the dance check.
I'm open. It's empty. Any of those days work fine.
I'm open. Same. Whatever you need. I'm fairly easy, so.
Does January fifth or sixth work for you, Pam?
Yeah, it works for me.
Because it doesn't take that long, right?
No.
We can't do anything after six on Wednesdays.
Wednesdays.
So we could do the sixth.
Do you want to do Thursday the sixth? All right, at seven o'clock?
Yeah.
That was, which, which day, at seven o'clock?
The sixth.
Of January.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we set the reorganizational meeting for January sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, do I have a second?
Possibly.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry, I put Carrie Dunn already. Opposed. Carrie, I'm sorry. All right. Mr. Altman, one act play.
And I'll, I'll let Mr. Walker present this situation. Thank you.
Josh Altman, with the interest of the students, would like to be the advocate as the coach director for the one act play. He had the same statement as what, you know, he just left the position at for a month ago. And from what I have, as far as putting things together, I believe the statement is one thousand twenty-five dollars. I'd take a look at eighteen, nineteen agreement and then any changes that were on the twenty, twenty, or the nineteen, twenty in the school year. So that statement did not change to that, but so one thousand twenty-five dollars for that one act play.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Public comment, any person attending is encouraged to speak at this time. With questions or concerns regarding the district, the board will take all into consideration. If actions is needed, it will be put into the next month's agenda. If your comment involves any staff member, principal, and or superintendent, we encourage that you go through the chain of command established by the district in order to remedy this situation. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person on any item or matter.
We gotta get more people.
Can I ask a question about the lighting? As far as the, where the, the money comes to help pay for the, the lighting that you're thinking about replacing and re-dweet. Is there, do we get money from the state kind of like in a, a stuff for like long-term? Or I guess it would be like a capital expenditure.
For a long-term facility maintenance?
Yeah, do we get, like, do we get so much money a year that would help pay offset the expense?
Mr. Thomas, can you answer that?
Yeah. Some of that money and a good chunk would come from just what you mentioned, Shannon, which is a long-term facility maintenance fund, which we get quite a few dollars every year to, to, well, every, every school does, depending on how old it is. And of course, we're kind of old, but, and so we get a fair number of dollars to help the facility be maintained. And it, it includes such things as what we're just talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I forgot that. Is this going to be a yearly payment or like bi-yearly or something like that or how's that work?
For the lighting, I think it's a decision we'll make later. We can either pay it all off at once or maybe in over three years or four years.
And often, Susan, to quickly answer your question, as Shannon has tried, there, you know, there are two options for sure. One is to pay it off depending on which choice we make. And the other is to take out a, a loan. And right now, of course, the, the percentages on loans are very, very low, almost at a all-time high. They're just suddenly going up now. But we could get, while we're saving substantial percentage of what we've been spending, we're also being able to borrow money at something like three percent. So that's, that's how we would typically, either one of those two choices. And as, as you mentioned, that's, that's what we can decide on next time when we make a decision.
And our kitchen project, that will be, that will be paid off in the very near future, won't it?
Yes, it will. I think it, I, 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 I think it's two or three years. It's just, it's very soon though, yeah.
So. The other thing before we adjourn, don't we have to set, because here it says Tuesday, December twenty-first for our truth and taxation and we decided to change that.
Yep.
I thought we set that for the thirteenth as well.
Yep.
Do we have to have a, do we have to have a motion on that or?
Well, I thought we did, but if, if not, yes, we would need a motion for that, sure.
So under other?
Yes, if you, if you look at the, under the adjournment, for the minutes there at the very end of the agenda, there are three, three issues and we have to set the, the time for, for all three of those. And I, I thought we could do them all the same night. The world's best workforce will not, it's just a hearing. It won't take up much time. The truth and taxation meeting will be me mostly making a presentation, takes twenty minutes, maybe thirty, depending on questions and so forth. And so then what we would do then, my, my thought would be that we would then have our regular December board meeting at that point, which again, all three of them being on the thirteenth.
Yeah, let's do it all and let them change.
And if we start our truth and taxation at six thirty, that world's best workforce, how long will that meeting take?
It's a hearing, so it, I would say fifteen minutes.
So did you want to do that before truth and taxation or did you want to do that before just how it's lined up?
Nope, either way.
Yeah, I'd rather come in like at six o'clock and, you know.
Yeah.
Sure.
So you said six o'clock for that?
Yeah, six.
Do I have a motion for that?
Uh, I move that we change the meeting date for our December truth and taxation, world's best workforce and regular school board meeting with world's best workforce being at six PM. Truth and taxation six thirty and the, the regular school board meeting at seven.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
All right, motion in second. Any discussion? None being heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Um, other than the training coming up for school board, is there other, any other trainings coming up for us?
Uh, no, those are, those are the most convenient. There are the ones that I mentioned and stuff of information to all of you. Again, if you're interested in, in going to the cities for that, it's at the conference center. And in, in the, I forget the exact dates, but in January. That's where they also, they'll have phase one and phase two plus the, the annual conference for MSBA. And the other is, they have them at other times besides them. But, and those are typically, at this point, they're typically online or through Zoom, like what we're doing right now.
Have you gotten a lot of good feedback from school board members of who's going to the convention? Mr. Thomas?
I'm, I am not going.
Pam and yourself.
Okay. Are you going, I think?
I don't think I'm going. Pam, are you going?
Yeah, I'm going to go in the beginning of the week and do phases one and two.
And two?
I need to go, Pam.
Have you done one?
I've done it, but I like to refresh because everything changes. I learned that this year with the Zoom stuff.
Third time's a charm.
Yeah. Because like you'll read something at the beginning of the year and also towards the end of the year, it changes.
Are you going?
How long do we have to tell you? I know you said you wanted it tonight, Mr. Thomas, but.
Uh, as soon as better, the, the trick isn't being able to get into those sessions. The trick is being able to get a room.
Sure.
And so that's, you know, the sooner that I can put names in, I can, I can do that through, through January, but I just, again, the sooner we do that, the sooner, the more likely we'll get a, you know, spot for everybody.
Okay.
I'll let you know by the end of the night or-
Right after we beat him up in the parking lot.
I know, Shannon, you said you wanted to buy one.
I'll let you know tonight, yeah.
Oh.
After the meeting, right after the meeting.
Perfect.
All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, Pam, second. Susan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, time.